Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as we start the meeting tonight, you can see we have a very light agenda. If you didn't have a copy of the agenda, there's one over here on the desk. We're going to open it up with public comment included. If you notice on the agenda, there's going to be a discussion with respect to the Twin Oaks neighborhood. So we'll have a full blown discussion about that in the meeting. But if anybody has anything they would like to bring up to the planning commission at this time, raise your hand and we'll have you step up to the podium. Looks like we have no public comments, so we'll move right on to our first item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes September Planning Commission, your motion for that. Okay. I wasn't here last month. All right, we'll have to table that. We have a reverse subdivision subdivision 2032 2034 Locust Street. We have a representative here. State your name.
Yeah, good evening. Dave Damon from H. Gordon Damon Associates. We prepared the plans for you to I'm here for 2032 2034 Locust Street. It's a subdivision, reverse subdivision plan that proposes to reconfigure the lot line between two existing properties. Presently, that lot line is parallels Pleasant Avenue and Interstate 95. When 95 was built, it sort of cut off the second property that's about 95 on the south and and we're proposing to reconfigure that lot line so that now runs perpendicular Pleasant Avenue. As shown on that drawing, creating Lot 1 and Lot 2. The existing dwelling would be on Lot 2. Lot 1 contains a garage building that's to be renovated to become a dwelling. Properties in the R3 residential district, it's both properties total about 10,278 square feet. And present properties are somewhat non-conforming with that R3 zoning. This reconfiguration breaks a lot of those non-conformances, so creates lots that comply with the lot area and much more useful lots. So we received a review letter from Tanya Engineering Associates. I can go over those items. There's eight items on that review letter. And discussed those with Alex Rodriguez and we're here tonight saying we're going to comply with all those items. Item one was said one tree is required per lot, two inch caliber tree will comply with that. Item two is sidewalk and curb will be constructed whenever subdivision approval is granted. So we would comply with that, providing widening on Pleasant Avenue when sidewalk and curb along there down to the corner. Three has to deal with the setbacks and the size of those sidewalks and we would comply with it. Those items also. Under the general comments, the answer to that is that that garage is going to be converted into a dwelling. And we'll comply with having that in the drawing. Five is getting a sewage planning approval, so we'll comply with that. Getting a letter from the Item six is the property is bounded on the southwest side with a 20 foot wide alleyway that never was improved. And when 95 came in, it sort of cut off the extension of that. This was an old development. I think it was called Pleasant View. Probably over 100 year old subdivision. And that alley was never improved, so we're going to proceed with the legal action. The property has rights to the center line of that alleyway, which would give lot to another 10 feet over on that south west side. So we're going to go through action to quiet title to bring that 10 foot strip into this subdivision and make it part of Lot 2. Seven, I discussed this with Mr. Rodriguez. The corner is a little bit unusual where Locust Street meets Pleasant Avenue in that northeast corner. It was right away was taken there by PennDOT when they constructed I-95 and they actually reconfigured the roadway there, so it extends further to the east. So that right away there is, was taken by PennDOT. It's actually township for now. And A is we would comply with the survey markers in accordance with whatever Tanya Engineering Associates wants us to do along that Essentially, that's that's it in a nutshell. I don't know if anybody has any questions concerning the project. I'd be happy to answer.
I just have one question. What's the purpose of the subdivision or the separation?
So it's the lots, the way they're configured now are unusual in that the lot that's closest to 95 is very narrow. And it's just reconfiguring it so that the line you see up there that has a Z through it would be removed. And the lots then now would be separated by a line that comes perpendicular Pleasant Avenue. That's shown on the plan as proposed lot. So it's just changing the lots from lot lines that are paralleling 95 to the opposite way creates a more usable second lot running on Pleasant Avenue. And if the purpose is then to improve that garage to make it a dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a 8.6 feet. So it'll be 18. Correct. And it was reviewed by the Zen Officer who recommended.
Motion to approve.
Second. Hi.
Hi.
I'm having a little trouble hearing you. It's breaking up. I didn't hear the, I didn't hear the proposal or the question. George. George.
Greg, can you hear me now?
It's breaking up.
At this point, if you have a majority here present that is in favor of it, then I think it would be moot point, correct?
Yeah.
Greg. We have a motion on the floor to approve the requested subdivision. We have no objection here from the panel. The applicant has conformed with or will conform with all the recommendations of our township engineer. And we have no questions here at all. And so we have put a motion on the floor, reviewed and seconded to approve recommending the subdivision plan to the Board of Commissioners and
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Been approved.
We need to do something about the audio. It's just not coming through.
And they would need to consider, it would be a resolution considered on November 10. Okay, perfect.
George, I can hear you. Charles, I can hear you. Otherwise, I can't hear what else is going on.
George just provided some additional clarification to the applicant as to when they can expect to make a presentation before the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, I still should be able to hear the activity in the room and I'm not. I'm just hearing your mic and I'm hearing.
Greg, can you hear me better now? This is Cindy.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I just moved the microphone closer to my mouth, so hopefully this helps.
All right.
All right, we're going to move to the next item on our agenda, which is a discussion presentation, I understand, from our Township Planner, Brian Sedell, with respect to the Twin Oaks Neighborhood Preservation and Enhancement Plan. And I don't know if everybody in the room, Brian, has a copy of this or they may or may not. I don't know.
I don't believe, excuse me, can everybody hear me? Yeah, I don't believe they do. I believe a copy of the report has been provided to the Planning Commission. What we did bring with us are a few of the boards that were presented to the community and prepared for the event. There's also the report is on the screen for everybody's viewing, but I always like having a couple of boards here. It's just easier to see front and center for everybody in the public here.
Will this be available? It's available on the website I'm taking.
What was the answer to that? This isn't working.
All right, Greg, the discussion tonight will be if the, if the Planning Commission recommends approval of the plan, it will be put up on the website.
What is he speaking from talking points that were, that was included in the email that George provided? There's a PDF that I'm looking at.
Yes, what I will be discussing is the PDF file that was circulated to the Planning Commission earlier this week.
Okay. I have that in front of me.
All right, perfect.
All right, Brian, floor is yours.
So just as a quick recap here to bring everybody up to speed. What I'm here tonight just to talk about is the Twin Oaks Neighborhood Preservation and Enhancement. This was a a great experiment, in my opinion. The staff, the professionals, I think, are very happy and how this and in the report came together. After this meeting tonight, we'll find out how the Planning Commission and the community feel about it. Generally, these neighborhood type of community plans, they're long, they're drawn out, there's application. Uh, there's applications for funding and grants till they get approved. The, the process can take two years. Uh, you're going back and forth on, you know, a variety of different things with, with a lot of different parties. Uh, the challenge from Mr. Needles was, how can we do this in thirty to ninety days? Uh, so we put together this strategy where we basically put everybody in the room together, uh, and had a brainstorm session. So on the first page of the table of contents, uh, talks about what was done. And then if you go to the acknowledgements page on page three, uh, really identifies the, all of the parties that were, uh, present for this planning session. Uh, it involves the, the township staff, all the main department managers, the township manager, finance director, recreation director, works and licenses and inspections. Uh, we also had representatives of the police department, uh, the commissioners. And we also had a number of planners from the county planning department that we invited and offered their time to sit in on the application and provide their feedback. And additionally, additionally, we also had the township's professionals, myself, uh, Catania Engineering. We had Al Federico, the, uh, township, uh, traffic engineer. And we also brought in Tracy Stickland, who's working on the, um, park and rec plan for the township right now. What we did is we, about a week before, or maybe it was two weeks before the event, we did a virtual meeting with all parties, uh, primarily the county planning department to talk about the neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Neils provided an overview of, uh, the neighborhood, the community, the challenges, um, the opportunities and the benefits, uh, to give everybody a snapshot of what they were coming into. What we did prior to the physical meeting is a lot of the homework. With all of these reports, you'll often get a lot of information regarding demographics and zoning, um, land uses, things like that that come out through the report. We did that upfront so that we, when we came into this initial meeting, we could have all that information and discuss all of those items. So the table of contents, uh, basically identifies in the appendices, a majority of those, uh, reports, uh, plans, documents that we provided prior to this meeting. We then went through and talked about all of the basically a roundtable discussion with all of the department heads. Um, you know, what, what they saw, what their concerns were, uh, again, opportunities and benefits. I provided oversight on the location, uh, the demographics that we found. Uh, the police report, uh, provided insight to their, what they're seeing from crime perspective, emergency management, public works. We got a good overview of all of these things. All these reports typically come out of these, uh, I'm sorry, all of these interviews typically come out of these reports, but they're more of an individual basis. So I may have an interview with the public work department and then I'll have an interview with the police department. Um, and then afterwards, you, you know, something comes up, a guy, I should, how does this interact? And I wish I would have asked public works this. This was a great opportunity because we put everybody in the room. So as a question came up, it was an open forum. Hey, what about this? What do, what do we think here? But I think this really captured a great snapshot of, of everybody's perspective from, from the department perspective and staff perspective. Um, we talked about the issues and, you know, the concerns that everybody had from a department standpoint. And after that, the questions that came up out of the, out of the group from the professionals, we decided to break into small groups. Uh, we had planned on breaking into small groups. We just didn't know what those were going to be initially. We decided to break into groups regarding land use and housing. Uh, another small group for parks, recreation and open space. And the third group for infrastructure, traffic, curbing, draw, uh, roadways, driveways, things of that nature. And then each small group talked about what they saw or, you know, what they believed to be some of the issues. After that small group discussion, everybody went out to the site. We walked around the neighborhood. We did a community tour. And we walked around the area. Uh, it's again, you know, what, what did we hear? And, and what, what was presented sitting in this room here? And then we went out to see what does the actual, actual community look like? What, how do these things interact? Um, after that, we got all the feedback, came back, took a lot of notes. Everybody emailed notes around, consolidated everything down and we came back about two days later. And we kind of went over all the recommendations of the small groups. Uh, we actually came in with an initial map that had everybody's recommendations that were probably about fifty to sixty ideas. From that, we re- recognized that a lot of those suggestions and recommendations were repetitive. We pared that down, uh, it come down with more of a simplified version of thoughts and recommendations. From there, what we did is, uh, we prepared some a summary of, of basically the exhibits to present to the community. Uh, the township had a Juneteenth celebration and it was a community meeting. We took the opportunity to basically consolidate everything down to these two boards that are to my right off to the side here. Uh, it provided snapshot of some of the images and maps that were put together, uh, from sidewalk and infrastructure, uh, inventory, the land use inventory and the initial concepts that came out of the recommendations. We also provided the community survey and design preference. There were certain things that came out of the, the community meetings. Uh, and we wanted to get the, the community's input on several of these items. You know, what should Market Street, the Market Street Commercial Portal look like? What type of uses would you like to see out there? How do you feel about vegetation in the community, uh, street trees? How do you feel about the walkability or the traffic in the community? What can be done if we're doing traffic, uh, crosswalks and traffic calming? What kind of opportunities are there? What type of housing style do you like? There's a diversity of housing out there. Is there a preference within the community? Um, walkways and sidewalks within the community. What type of park improvements would you like to see and fencing standards? So primarily for these, you know, we, we tried to give A and B options, uh, for, for the community. But as a result of that, there were, there was a lot of discussion. There was a lot of feedback. You know, in some situations it, you know, I like both ideas and some situations I don't like either idea. And then just talking to the community, you also receive some additional input of some things that maybe you didn't think, or we didn't think about with the initial group, uh, that we brought back into the plan. After the community meeting, after the survey, came back and refined the plan a little bit further as well. Uh, so we, we identified in here, you know, the highlights that everybody was seeing from these three primary areas of housing, land use, park and rec and infrastructure. And then we boiled that down into, uh, again, more higher level, uh, goals and action items. And basically identified within there, the land use and housing component, you know, planning and zoning ordinance type of, of issues. Uh, Market Street Enhancement Plan. That, that is something, you know, as we looked at this, there are two distinct areas. We have a commercial corridor and we have a residential neighborhood. So uh, really need to break them out into those, those two different areas or focuses. And the parks and rec, uh, there was a discussion of the vegetated buffers. Where, what screening areas, what should be screened? Other opportunities for additional screening. And then the other aspect is influencing the park and rec open space plan. What do we want Twin Oaks Park to look like in the future? What amenities need to be there? And, you know, scrolling across the screen right now are a series of the, uh, maps that were put together for this. If we can go one or two more. Go to, just keep that down. Uh, actually go back down. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, it would be up on the screen. One more. One. One more, sorry. There we go. That one. So that's basically what you see on the, on the wall. To the left is basically the large board that I have over here to the right as well. Um, we just highlighted the, the goals, uh, on this map as well as within the report. Um, other things that came out of this, I'm sorry, George, if, if somebody, uh, somebody back there from the screen, can we go to the next page? But those are, what the numbers represent, the, the numbers actually correspond to the list on the, on the right side. Uh, and, and basically just trying to identify key map. So item number one, uh, back to the map. For example, um, the note for item number one is explore zoning revisions to encourage commercial uses on industrial properties adjacent to Market Street nine ninety-five, discourage outside storage of materials and equipment and provide enhanced buffers from residential areas. So the number one actually appears in a couple of locations throughout this map because those were the key areas where that topic was brought up. Uh, you also notice number eleven, uh, corresponds to the infrastructure, roadways and stormwater. Investigate the potential for connecting roads between dead end roadways or establishing cul-de-sac turning areas at the end of dead end roadways to accommodate emergency vehicles, sanitation and snow removal vehicles. Uh, so there were a few areas where that item was discussed. And this gets back to the consolidation of ideas. Like you said, there initially there were fifty different items, um, that, that we came up with recommendations, but we could summarize them and put them into the same kind of category. So the, the comments that are on this page here are enumerated items correspond to the map. And it was done to provide that kind of visual key. Uh, if we can go to the, the next screen. One of the other discussions that came out of, of, of this meeting and discussions with the county is, uh, the, the concept of what's known as an Act one thirty-five plan or project. Uh, this is something where it's a, a blighted and blighted rehabilitation property act, so to speak. Uh, this is something that's maybe out of reach from the township's perspective, uh, to be able to administer themselves. No problem. Uh, but we, what we are in the process of discussing, uh, with county, with Delaware County right now is for the county to administer that project uh, in more of a collaborative terms. Uh, so Mr. Needles and I have been very involved in working with the county and facilitating this program and helping this program get off the ground. So there are some of the areas, uh, that we looked at within the community that have some properties that are struggling, uh, that need to be rehabilitated. Uh, what we provided here on this screen image are those opportunities. What could we do to rehabilitate some of these areas, improve them, uh, driveway connections, sidewalk landscaping, building facades, uh, a variety of different ideas. So what we're identifying within this report are, are several of those concepts. Uh, and this one specifically to move things along with the county and, uh, progress the Act one thirty-five program as well.
Justin, just to, to piggyback off of what Brian said there. So the Act one thirty-five program through the Delaware County Redevelopment Authority is a program where the, uh, Delaware County has set aside over a million dollars to help, uh, re- rehabilitate vacant dilapidated homes throughout Upper Chichester and then eventually in other communities. Um, so what we've been doing with them is identifying properties that have been long-term vacant properties that have been, uh, nuisance properties where maybe, you know, the township is cutting the grass on a regular, uh, basis or you know, the house is falling apart because nobody's lived in it for, you know, some of these are six, eight years. Um, and then we go through a court process with Delaware County, uh, to be able to take that property and have someone come in as a conservator, rehabilitate the property and then put it up for sale. Well, right now it's a vacant home, uh, so no, uh, so nobody maintains it. No taxes are collected off of it or anything like that. So I think everybody would benefit from it. Um, you know, the county is using their money to come in and rehab the property. Um, so, so we get a nice new rehabbed property. And when the county comes in to rehab the property, they have to do it to specific standards, sustainability standards. So for instance, nineteen oh one Huddle Street is our first project. The average flipper, uh, that has been flipping properties in that Wallhead Avenue area puts about thirty thousand dollars into a property. The, uh, price tag for the flip through the county is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So that property will get a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars worth of improvements into it and then will be sold to, to a first time home buyer so that someone can move into that property and they will have the property that has the highest efficiency standards, you know, that, that, that you can get on a property. So it gets back on the tax roll. It gets owner occupied and, uh, you, it gets, gets back being productive use property. No, 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 no. These are only properties that have been abandoned and vacant. So they have to go through a full process of either, uh, you know, not paying taxes anymore that they have to, it has to meet a bunch of criteria. So it has to meet criteria that no one is living in the property or has lived in the property for X amount of years, um, that the, the taxes possibly are not getting paid, that it has leans against it for failure to pay like sewer, that kind of stuff. So it has to meet these qualifications. So for instance, uh, we have, we've identified, uh, four properties in the Twin Oaks neighborhood that are vacant prop, long-term vacant properties. Of the four, three of them qualify for the program. So we've started the process to go through with the program. Now this program does take about a year. And it does, uh, you know, again, anything dealing with property rights gives the, the owner has every right to the property, every step along the way until pretty much the end. So there's, they get, they properly served paperwork. They can come at that time and petition and say, no, you know what? I'm going to take care of the property. I want it back. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay the back taxes. I'm gonna get someone in the property. So, so it's, uh, it has, you know, and that's part of the constitution, due process, right? You have the right to own property. And we can't, we can't do anything about, like, we, the government can't take that away from you without due process. This is the due process to be able to get these back to productive use.
I cannot hear what's going on.
It's just.
I heard your comments, George, but after that, I'm not hearing anything.
Okay, my name is Gilbert Bruton. I live at twenty-eight Broadway Avenue. In that for thirty-six years. And, uh, reason why ask questions that I'm asked it, because I've come to a lot of these meetings in the past. And there's a, there's area to read the sound. Talking about rebuilding, we get the policy. There's a whole lot of other stuff we're not getting. It's allocated for you. So, you know, like, and I think that, uh, this is don't make sense. Then tell God it goes to pictures and more action.
Can I take, can I take a shot at what I think I hear you talking about? All right. Brian's presentation is dealing with the status and proposals for taking care of many things within Twin Oaks, not just this particular thing. But if I'm to step aside, I want to say this as a layman, it's not anything. And we have an attorney here to correct me if I go off the, the straight and narrow, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of times what would happen in a situation, just take any one of the, take the house on the right-hand side there. All right. If taxes aren't being paid, et cetera, so at some point in time, somebody in the government would take steps to have a sheriff's sale on that house. We all know what that is. Somebody comes in and says, wow, we're going to sell your house. And then the owner either has to show up, make some payments or contractually by the government's right. All right. All right, after giving the landowner or homeowner the opportunity to save the property by paying taxes, et cetera. It's sold at public auction and then anybody who buys it come in and do anything they want to do with that property, have to go to zoning and build a property and. George mentioned the word flipper, somebody would come in and flip that house. This particular program they're talking about is not a township program. But it's a, it's a state program, it's a Delaware County has applied for, I guess it was a grant or under the, under the bill itself, section one thirty five or whatever. Provided X number of dollars. In this case, it was a couple, couple million dollars or something to use. Rather than put this through a sheriff's sale. Have the property properly rehabilitated to an A class property. Okay, just fix that property up. You were the next door neighbor and somebody came in and fixed up that next door, that house. And made it an A class property. I don't think you wouldn't be happy. I think you'd be happy that that thing was finally. Have a good neighbor in here and it's well and it and it's going to be. Air conditioned or heated to the proper standard codes. Nobody's going to come in and. Do any sloppy type of work or anything to get it done, they're going to do it right. Then that house is going to be put up for sale. All right, and somebody will come in and buy that house. And there's conditions on how long they have to live there or what they have to do. They just can't buy it, stay there two D, two days and. And leave. They have to become a member of the community, so to speak. That's what he's talking about here. It's not. The traffic down on Market Street, it's, that's not this particular part of the presentation. There are many things in this report to deal with. Where I got this problem and and nobody's paying attention to me. That's, that's another part of this report. All right, as I read through it, but that's not this. This is a, in my opinion, this is just me and I'm not as the planning commission, I'm just saying. My opinion, somebody's picking up a base, based in, making property, making my community a better place to live. And and nobody, the government's not getting a kickback on this, nobody's getting any money out of it, there's. No special contractor coming in here, there's none of that's happening here. This is all just trying to. Go out and look at communities that need rehabilitation and some assistance to get back on their feet where they have properties like this. And 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 the rest of this can't say, I wish I could fix that guy's property, but I don't have that kind of money. They're doing it. That's what this is.
And if I can add to that real quickly, uh, you know, there, there are several. Properties like this that the township is currently looking at. Some of those situations, we can't find a property. We can't find a con- contact information, we can't find anybody that's actually responsible for the property. And that, that's where this situation comes into play and it, why this, this program specifically is a great opportunity for those type of properties.
My concern.
I cannot hear the gentleman.
I just want.
I cannot hear the gentleman speak.
I want everybody to understand in English. What you're saying, not just a whole bunch of pictures and all that stuff. I want you down to the bare bones of what you're talking about. So we get a good understanding. That's, that's what I'm saying. All right.
So if you'd like, uh, and if it's okay, there's a basically a one page sheet that we put together of the goals and action items. I can quickly go through those items. Uh, and it hopefully is that, uh, actually, uh. Sorry about that. So under the component of. Land use and housing. Uh, again, we broke that down into two categories of planning and zoning and market street streetscape. For the planning and zoning, uh, the first category or or the suggestion was to explore zoning revisions to encourage commercial uses. On industrial properties adjacent to Market Street and I ninety five. Provide enhanced buffers from residential uses and discourage outside storage of materials and equipment. And identify appropriate uses and parting standards to regulate the con- conversion of existing and or non-conforming commercial. And institutional uses within the community.
So in in plain English, we believe that on uh four fifty two on Market Street that it's a mess. And that there's a lot of outdoor storage and just things everywhere. And we don't think that that makes sense for the future to have that next to a residential community. So what we want to do is we want to come up with regulations. That allow for different types of businesses to come in along the four fifty two corridor, but ensures that they don't pile debris. Um, that there's an appropriate buffer between the businesses and the residents so that there's trees, that the, that the business is not going to be impactful. On the everyday life. Now, we can't fix every problem and sometimes these things take thirty years, right? So. The car depot has always been a big issue and so have the, the, the train tracks. The, the federal government's never going to let us take those train tracks away. And they're also never going to let us take CSX away, but but we can impact the zoning along four fifty two. And try to work on a, getting a better buffer between the neighborhood and those uses so that we can try to raise the quality of life.
Um, first of all, I I'm late, but I still have questions. Um, you said something about. The difference between thirty thousand dollars and a hundred and twenty something thousand dollars that the. Government or that the county would pump into getting those properties rehab. What's the difference? You said if from the outside came in, they would pump thirty thousand in, but some. But the county would pump a hundred and twenty something, is that what I heard?
Right, I, don't, don't misconstrue, don't misconstrue that those two numbers. One is XYZ company comes in, sees that property, maybe picks it up at a sheriff's sale. Puts thirty thousand dollars into the property, just bare bones, puts a new heater in, talks a couple of windows. Puts thirty thousand dollars in it and sells it for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. All right, they just selling it, so they're making, I don't know, a hundred ten thousand dollars on the deal, pretty good. This is the government going in, putting a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of improvements into that house. To do it right, to put the right type of windows in, the right type of flooring, the right type of insulation. Make the heating system what it needs to be, put the siding on it, really needs to be there, fix the roof, not just flip it. And get out. Make that a resident that the community and the purchaser can be proud of. That's the difference between those two numbers. It's got nothing to do with, with, we can't control the first one. Once that house is sold at sheriff's sale, they just do what they want to do. And that's the end of it. So whatever that house, they, they could put a hundred and forty thousand dollars into it, but they probably wouldn't sell it for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, it'd be much more.
So, uh, so then who determines the fair market price for the house that the government is going to be?
Now you're getting into government regulations and you're beyond me. Uh, it's got to do probably with the act has certain limitations and things like that, I don't know.
The act requires there to be real estate agents involved to do market analysis, they have to sell the property for a market rate. And uh, and basically there, there's no turn of a profit, right? So basically. The costs associated with the construction get taken care of, any legal costs associated with the action, any leans, like it just keeps going down, paying off whatever was due. Uh, until the money is completely disappeared. And if, at the event that it's sold at a market price that gives uh money back. To the previous owner would, would, would make some money off it because all the leans and everything else were paid off it, were obligated, the courts obligated to give them a check as well.
The train tracks, but you could make four fifty two look better. But what about um, putting um, what are those things called? Um. Sound barriers, because we see them in other neighborhoods where train tracks are. And it kind of eliminates some of the noise. And some of the foundational problems that we are having because of the trains.
So right now the township doesn't own any land over there, so we wouldn't be able to put a wall up. Um, they're all individually owned parcels along the, the train tracks there. Um, and I didn't, Brian really didn't hit on this too much in the beginning, but the ethos of this plan. Was not to do a thirty year, you know, high level, what's a twenty million dollar project that we may or may not get funded within fifteen years. This was what are tangible items that we have the funding to be able to do and the resources to be able to do now and over the next five years. So we didn't really look at stuff like that. When we looked at, at this, we looked at it and said, you know what, maybe there's a possibility to plant more trees. As the buffer, but we didn't go deep dive into, um, you know, are we going to get a team together to try to lobby the federal government to force CSX? To acquire a private property from the, the homeowners along there to put up a wall. Because that's a, that's a big lift, right? So that's probably, you know, a twenty million dollar, get a lot of people involved, hope that all the people on that. On that section are willing to give easements and sell off the property to allow for a wall to be built. That's a really, really big lift. We, this is more about us trying to get to, uh, you know, going through the heart and soul process, what matters the most to the people in the community. Then going out and doing a survey of, hey, you know, based off of that, here's a couple like different areas that we, we directly affect as local government, right? So like, I can't build the wall there because I don't have the property and I'm not the federal government, right? But as the local government, we can set zoning laws that say, hey, when you come in here to build now going forward, if you're going to redevelop or build. We can build better buffers, so we can require better buffers for, for properties that get redeveloped. So it, it's really about. Trying to affect the things that we can affect. And saying, there's all these other issues and we know about these issues and when the opportunities arise and there's something that might come up, we're going to still go for that. And try to get that done. But this was really about how do we get a five year plan together to make. Uh, you know, incremental improvement in the community as quick as possible, things people could see, they could feel and say, there's an investment being made into my community. If we tied up all the money in a twenty year project to try to get the wall in, we would never be able to afford to replace the sidewalks or do the other, you know, do the other things or rehab the parks and things like that. So we looked at those things that we think we can tangibly get done in the next five years.
Put together is that this is really supposed to be a guideline. If this is a broad strokes plan for the community. It's this type of plan that's very important. If the township wants to go out and pursue. Other grant opportunities, if for example, a grant opportunity. Uh, became available to go after improvements on Market Street and do streetscape improvements or sidewalk curbing. Intersection type of improvements. What is very helpful to obtain those type of grants is having a plan like this. Hearing from the community, having that insight, receiving the community input. Uh, doing the surveys and having this guideline that we can go back and say. Uh, when we go back to apply for that grant, yes, we've met with the community, they do want this, this is important. So this is more of a broad strokes plan rather than the specific details of. You know, at this exact intersection, this is exactly what the, you know, curb is going to look like or the sidewalk. More of a, an initial guideline for those developments. Yes.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Derek Alston, I live at twenty five oh four Williams Avenue, uh, in Twin Oaks. Um, I think one of the things that, uh. Mr. Bruton was. Uh, trying to illustrate was that when I look around the room. Uh, most of the members of the community are longstanding members of Twin Oaks. Uh, generations of families. And what we've noticed over the past few years is a slow but steady gentrification of the community. Uh, where, you know, homeownership has changed hands, uh, old families are. Are, you know, leaving out and not giving the opportunity for. Properties like what you guys are proposing, you know, and I think one of the things that. Um, Mr. Bruton was to see is an opportunity for members of the community. To have perhaps first shot at purchasing those properties or at least some kind of. Uh, uh. Program that will allow members of the community an opportunity to take hold of those properties. Uh, so I don't know if that's a part of your agenda or part of your program. Uh, but we, I think at least like to hear something in reference to that.
That was brought up uh during the conversations with the redevelopment authority and uh what they said was. Great, so where should we market these properties? So I said, once we get these properties started, we should go to the Twin Oaks Civic Association and let them know. Here's what three properties that are going to, that are, that are now undertaken and and started the construction process. Here's what we think the sale prices are going to be, you know, start marketing this out. Uh, we've heard this before, you know, we have, um, my nephew would like to move back to Twin Oaks, right? So these are things where the, we can directly have that opportunity to kind of get that out into the community. Before that gets to a point where they would, they would go just out to the open market at that point. We think that's important, right? Like, look, it's, it's, it's a very strong community, there's uh, there's families that have been there for generations, right? I grew up in the Viscos Village. My great grandparents were Viscos employees who lived in that house, that house is still in my family, right? That to me is home. I get it, that's my community. I might not live there now, but I'm at my mom's house all the time, right? Like, that's my home. I totally get it, right? You want to have a community that you, that you walk around the streets and you know your neighbors, you feel comfortable, you know, you check in on your older neighbors. You know, you check on the younger neighbors to make sure everything's okay. That's a great community. And then we think Twin Oaks is a great example of a good, like, that type of community. So I think preserving that is actually one of like the key components that came out of this was, we need to make sure that, that, that this isn't. Push anything down anybody's throat, try to gentrify the neighborhood, anything like that. It's like, how can we, how can we just enhance a little bit the quality of life? And preserve what you got going on over there now.
It's actually for that reason that the name of the plan changed and evolved throughout this process as, as well. It didn't start out as the neighborhood preservation and enhancement plan, but after hearing from the community, that's what it was renamed because that is the focus. We want to enhance the community that's there and preserve the community that's there.
Okay, well, I, I might be jumping ahead and I'm just going to borrow a couple of seconds from your presentation. Uh, on, on your, on your chairs, you had this heart and soul community report. Has nothing to do with this discussions per se, as, as it's being presented today. But it, if you go in there, there's a page nineteen, there's a, there's a section there called sense of community. All right, and if you go through there, you'll see that it touches on exactly what's here and it talks about. This organization, Heart and Soul, working with local organizations to address the same concerns that you're expressing right now to make sure the community's voice is heard. All right, so if, if this were to come, come to fruition, what right now Heart and Soul is. What was a, a, a program that took place in Upper Chichester for the last uh two, three years and several people in this audience have also participated in it. The whole purpose of that was to find out what does this community want? Twin Oaks, Willowbrook, whoever, what do you want? And expressing the concerns that you just heard from this gentleman here, I don't know what's going on, but I'd like to know type thing. This isn't the government speaking. This report is the community speaking. And it's what the folks that we interviewed and talked to and everything, what they said. And through. That sense of community, that, that thing's called a value statement and it's. There's another value statement, what type of education we want in this community, what kind of parks and recreation, kind of safety, et cetera. Things that we're all interested as residents. All right. And the hope is that this organization will survive the grant that was put in place. That have it participate and develop this plan. And they'll form a five oh one C three or a small uh exempt organization type. To go forward and partner with people like Twin Oaks Civic Association. And with that input, we would then unify, apply for grants, et cetera, et cetera, possibly go back to the government. And say, hey, here's what's going on, would you like to participate? Invite them back in to do something if, if possible. And the answer could be, well, you know, that could be a one thirty five situation. Well, other than the fact that I'm on a planning commission, I understand what that is, I wouldn't have known as a resident what one thirty five was and how it could benefit me. So it would be the community working together, going back to the government, being educated and going forward with some source of funding to get done what we want to get done. So hopefully this survives. We'll see there's, we're, we're looking for people to volunteer to get involved with this going forward, but that's another day. Hope that helps a little bit.
Continue going down through that list, but for the most part, you know, that's really what I wanted to present to the, the planning commission and to the communities. Just to provide an overview of process, how we got to where we are today. How we, how we arrived at the report that's in front of the planning commission this evening. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions that the board may have at this point on process or the report itself.
I just want to know what the timeframe for this project is in terms of getting started.
When you say this project, are you referring to the housing, the X one thirty five? This is a, a process that is, it's currently in process. In, in terms of, it does take a while, as Mr. Neils indicated, this is a minimum year long process. So we notify the property owners and do all the appropriate legal processes. The, the county has actually offered their legal counsel to us that they've been very helpful, guiding everyone through this process. So, so it's something that is in process now, but will probably be in process for about another year.
Are you taking, are you taking comments from the, from the board yet?
Yes, I, I just asked the board if there were any questions regarding the process or in the report itself. So I'm, I'm happy to answer or at least try to answer those questions.
Okay, uh, for the, uh, for the folks from the, uh, from the community who are there and don't see my face. Uh, I'm Greg Trader, uh, on the planning commission, um, representing the district in which, um, Twin Oaks resides. I'm also, um, a resident. I'm on Douglas Avenue. So my comments, uh, I'm going to step outside of my role and speak as a, uh, as a, um, citizen and resident of this community. And the things that I'm going to mention, uh, I want on the record. Can I be heard clearly?
Yes.
Okay. So you speak about quality of life. And one of the qualities of life was already mentioned. One of the impacts to that is the noise from the CSX operation. And the, uh, and the effect it has on the homes there where the, uh, where the tracks are closest. That is a problem and it's going to always impact our standard of living there. We deal with noise off ninety five in, in one area of, of, of Twin Oaks. Fine, but a, a, almost all of us deal with noise from CSX. So that's going, that's going to continue to be a problem until it gets addressed. Proximity of the natural gas lines, there are major lines that, uh, run a perpendicular to ninety five and run, uh, they actually, uh, run between the operation and the residents that are, are closest to it. And there's a, it's a safety concern and it's always been one. And it's one that's going to have to be addressed at some point or, or another. And whether we have to get another study done to be able to deal with it, whether we have to get the county, the state and the feds involved, that's going to have to be done at some point. So I just want to get all this stuff on the record. We also have, um, what impacts our community is at high traffic periods on Market Street, also known as four fifty two, there's difficulty getting in, in and out of this neighborhood. Now, maybe that's something that, you know, with this particular, uh, uh, effort, maybe that's, maybe that can be dealt with. There is a vacant property at the corner of Washington and four fifty two. And the lot that used to belong to, uh, I don't know if the owners still control the lot, but people use it, uh, for parking, um, uh, trailers, all, all kinds of other construction type vehicles. And that's, that currently goes on. Litter is a problem for us and always has been. Stormwater management could be enhanced better if, and if, if we had, that would approve drainage on some of the dead end streets. Those dead end streets would also, uh, it would help with, uh, stormwater management and drainage system to put in if they were developed into cul-de-sacs. Those are the major issues, um, that I hear about from neighbors on my, on my block and some of the adjacent, uh, uh, blocks. So I'm not asking that all this stuff be handled through this effort, but I want to get this stuff on the record as being part of what needs to be addressed in Twin Oaks. So with that, yield the floor.
So I, I do appreciate your comments and I believe, uh, all of the items that you raised are included in this report or addressed in this report in some way. We certainly brought up and are aware of the, the noise from CSX and from I ninety five. As Mr. Neils indicated, there's only so much that the township can do that's within their control. But it does, the report does identify those items and those issues. If there are other opportunities or for grants or funding that come up in the future, it's something that we can monitor and be aware of. From the pipeline and I guess from the pipeline, safety concerns. One of the items that we are looking at is how those access points are regulated or controlled. The visibility and screening of those areas regarding traffic on Market Street. We did address that quite extensively with the Township's Traffic Consultant. The, the consensus was, you know, with the community that's here and the volume of traffic that's coming into the community, it's going to be very difficult in the immediate near future to get a signalized intersection within the community. This plan is intended to be a five year plan. And while that's something that's on everybody's radar, the township's radar, it's probably something that would be pushed out beyond that five year plan. But we did specifically address that in the goals and recommendations to provide and seek opportunities for intersection improvements. The Market Street vacancy was addressed in the goals and, you know, discussing the outdoor storage of parking and equipment and the reuse or new uses that could be provided on those abandoned properties to dress up and improve the appearance along the commercial corridor. That was actually a specific question that came out of the community survey of what do we want them, the Market Street? I shouldn't say we, what does the community with the Market Street corridor to look like? And the other component that you brought up is the stormwater management. That was a big discussion. We actually had one of our small group focus groups was based on the infrastructure for the roadways, but also talking about stormwater improvements. I'm sorry, opportunities for stormwater improvements. And that did get into a lot of those cul-de-sac areas for the dead end areas. Inlets, monitoring, developing a maintenance system to ensure the inlets are cleaned out and operating efficiently. And we even acknowledged, as we did the walk around community, which was very helpful. Chime in, I'll make another comment here. But basically, uh, you know, as we walk around the community, we identified areas that were ponding or puddling. We were there, um, a few hours after a rain event. So we saw drainage issues on the street. We saw puddling and ponding issues. So that, that is something that would be addressed. And, and if I could, just to recap on, on the report itself, try to come back on this. It was very helpful. Doing the initial research upfront, we did the desktop review to identify where sidewalks were, what types of uses were in the community, um, what those land uses were. But by going out with boots on the ground in the field, walking around, you know, we walked around and everybody said, hey, you said this was commercial, this isn't commercial, this is residential, this is vacant. So we were able to make those improvements and we actually received comments back from the county. The information that we started with was from the county. County actually asked us for the updated information so that they can update their records appropriately as well. So just getting back into the whole process and, and the effectiveness of this. It was, it was a good collaborative, I believe, from the township's perspective, from the community's perspective, and also from the county, uh, getting everybody on the same page.
Okay, I didn't know if it was about to be over if, because they were talking or not. But I, I'm just sitting here trying to understand what the focus was for, or maybe like what the goal of it was because, um, I came thinking we were going to be like presented this report and what's going on. And just sitting here and listening and not being able to really see it in my hands. I'm just getting a very broad perspective of what exactly is in it. I feel like this is the only part I'm clear on because we stopped and we went over it. This part, I wasn't sure until I asked, you know, what was that? And then he did explain a few and I understand what those few were, but it would have been helpful to have a report in my hand to know what's actually going on. But like I, if we're, I don't know, I thought it was about to be over, maybe it's not. But I would still be leaving with a very broad understanding of what the report is. And it would have been helpful to have something in my hand or something. I feel like no, nothing's really touched on until someone asks a question. And it's still like, oh, it's included in the report, but okay, it's included, but what exactly is being done about it?
So Jasmine, maybe you could go to the, the one with the, uh, the map with all the numbers and we could walk through what they are. So one of the requirements of local government is to, uh, every fifteen years, prepare something what's called a comprehensive plan, right? And a comprehensive plan is basically, you know, writing out, what are we going to do for the next fifteen years, right? So, um, here in Upper Chichester, we've had to come up with a little bit different way to do it because we have like thirteen distinct areas in our community, which are all very different. Ogden is different than Excelsior Village, which is different than Twin Oaks Farm, which is different than Lindwood Heights, which is different than the Boothwind Town Center, which is different than, than Twin Oaks. So to, to satisfy that requirement of doing these plans, we've come up with this process of doing these quick neighborhood plans. So with these quick neighborhood plans give us, here is the direction for how do we allocate township resources towards these communities? What actions are, that we can affect? So again, we're not big landowners. We don't get, get involved with private properties, things like that. But there are certain regulations and things that we can do that can kind of help shape or candidly, if done wrong, destroy a neighborhood, right? So, uh, we're trying to meet our requirement of doing this comprehensive plan, planning all the different things that legally we're allowed to do and obligated to do over a five year period to say, delegate, you know, these resources will go here. These, these resources, this is important in the Twin Oaks neighborhood. This is what we've heard, we're going to, we're going to deploy some resources there. This is important over in Ogden, we're going to deploy some resources there. This is important in Boothwind Highlands, we'll put some money there. So it helps us manage the budget of like, how do we get projects done, resources out to community? And, and help, you know, improve the neighborhoods. Our job is to make healthier communities, right? And the tools that we have to do that are a lot of regulatory, uh, items. And planning is like how we can leverage what we can, what we can do. So on this map, I mean, Brian, so Brian talked about, uh, number one earlier. So exploring zoning revisions to encourage, uh, commercial uses on industrial property. So if anybody's ever built property or put in addition on their home or put a shed or a garage or anything like that, you have to go through a regulatory process called zoning. And that regulatory process is a book that says you can build this type of building on this lot. As long as you do this, this or this, it can be this far away from the property line. It's really this convoluted mess, right? But one of the things that we've found is from some of the, the long past practices that some of these areas that abut residential neighborhoods don't have appropriate buffers. So people end up living next to an industrial use where, you know, if we change that zoning and we say industrial uses can't be done there, storage of equipment can't be done there. That can only be, you know, retail or, or office space. And, and if it's going to be that, it's got to be, you know, a hundred feet away from the homes. And there's got to be forty feet worth of tree, tree depth in between to provide a buffer, right? So that's the things that we can regulate and we can change. Develop, uh, design guidelines to establish, establish consistency throughout the community. So like, we can do things like, um, signs. I don't know if you've seen the street signs with the, uh, with the neighborhood seal, right? So that's like a township wide program that we're going to celebrate all of our different neighborhoods, but we're all the same in Upper Chichester by having every neighborhood have their own distinct seal on a street sign. Now, might not seem like it's something, but you know, as, as people come into your community, they might ask you, what's, wow, what's that? What's on the, the street sign, you know? And you get to talk a little bit about the history of your community, right? So it's, it's things like that. We can't affect like, I can't say you can only paint houses blue, you know, but we can, we can kind of clean up areas where we own it and set in different design guidelines. Identify appropriate, uh, site uses and parking standards to regulate potential conversion of existing and non-conforming commercial and institutional uses. So that's three, right? So three is a, um, general fire, general code and fire, right? So, you know, that's an industrial use building in the middle of the community, right? It's going to be really, really hard to make that no longer an industrial use building in a community. But we, the Board of Commissioners has the ability to change zoning guidelines to maybe make that use a little less invasive on the community. Or to work to attract the business that maybe has a little bit, you know, is, is interested in being part of the community or is not necessarily, you know, uh, as, as, as high of a use. Smaller trucks, less employees, uh, better engagement, that kind of thing. So, so those are like, that's like the regulatory stuff that we can do. Now, um, Marcus, uh, Market Street Streetscape Enhancement. So there is money out there through the state to enhance the, the state highways. We don't own Market Street. We don't really have the ability to do anything with Market Street other than this is something that we could give a plan to PennDOT or to our state representative and say, hey, Market Street's a mess, doesn't look nice. It doesn't feel like when you pull up to Twin Oaks that you're going into a neighborhood, right? It's just like, so we can, we can put together a plan that says we want some trees here. We want some sidewalk here, we want better pedestrian connections. And we can go to PennDOT and say, this is important. It's important that you give the money to make this. So that's something that we feel like we can, we can get out in front of pretty quickly in the next five. Parks, open space and recreation. So we asked, uh, in the, in the study, would you prefer to see an additional park in the neighborhood or an enhancement of the current park? Overwhelmingly, it was an enhancement of the current, right? So now we made a decision, right? If everybody said, hey, we want a second park, we were going to go and say, oh, there's this area in the back right here that is all privately owned. How do we acquire that to do, to develop a second park, right? We said scrap that, public's more interested enhancing the park over Arlington Avenue. So we worked with our, uh, park planner to come up with an idea of what would be, uh, appropriate uses there. We took feedback, people said they want separation between the, the tot lot and the, uh, basketball court. They want a bigger basketball court setback. So we, we have a, a, a plan put together for that. So we're going to try to attempt to make that happen. So, and, and again, there's, there's money available, there's funding available for us to make large improvements like this, smaller improvements and potentially even bigger improvements if opportunities arise. Yep. Sure.
Change to our area.
Yeah, we are. So, um, typically what we do is this is like, usually when these plant, these plans go through the planning commission, it's, it's still not a final draft, right? So we're going to take the comments and feedback and adjust and, 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 and change. And then we'll issue a final draft report, which will get, eventually get acted on by the Board of Commissioners, which will be another opportunity to come out and speak. Uh, I anticipate that this will probably go in front of the Boarding, Board of Commissioners. One of two things will happen. The Planning Commission might tonight say, you know what? We've, we feel satisfied with the amount of feedback that was given. We're good with this. Or they might say, we're, we want to, we want to take this under consideration a little bit longer. You know, to, to, for, for any types of changes. If they're comfortable with it tonight, it goes out to that final draft form. Brian makes any changes based off of conversation tonight, anything that might, you know, might have been brought up. That's an aha moment, right? And then it gets distributed out, we'll put it on our website, we'll have available copies up here for people to pick up. And then, uh, feel free to read through it. And then eventually it'll come in front of the Board of Commissioners. And then, uh, feel free to read through it and then eventually it'll come in front of the Board of Commissioners for, for the. Sure.
Yep.
No. So there's certain, like league, I mean, there's this thing called spot zoning and you can't necessarily just change something to prevent something from happening. Uh, what you can do is there's modifications that can be made that could maybe lessen the impact. So I can't, uh, let's say you go to sell your house, right? I can't go tomorrow and say, you know what, let's make that a commercial building because I don't want someone to live there anymore. And then you, you know, so, so we have to, they have property rights, we can't take those property rights away. We can put them through a process, which is giving them due process to modify things that may make, make it a better situation.
So, so the purpose of this meeting to me, if I understand it correctly, was to give a plan to you guys. Because you all have copies of the plan and we're just here. And unless we ask a question and you back up and we see these pictures here that I didn't know you had, like even the drafts of those, we don't know much more than I walked in with.
If you recall at the beginning of the meeting, I said, does everybody here have a copy of this plan? Because I was anticipating your question, but that's, it, it has to do basically with, we are the filter for the Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
So up to this point, un- unless somebody here had a personal involvement in it, we didn't see this until it was starting to be discussed this evening. So this was our, their presentation to the, to the Planning Commission. Right, but all Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Okay.
What you guys, any for Twin Oaks based on what we wanted in Twin.
Now, so my clarification question to George at the beginning was, when will you have an opportunity to see this report? And he indicated that in all likelihood, depending on what our decision is with respect to, do we think this is good enough for the board to look at? The answer was, they'll put it up on, on the website. Then the board at some point will have an opportunity, it'll be at a printed agenda saying, we're going to go over the, uh, Neighborhood Preservation Enhancement Plan for Twin Oaks. You would have had an opportunity to have read that and could come to that board meeting and express your support, concerns, suggestions, et cetera. But with this meeting here, Brian and George and, and Planning Commission has an opportunity who have heard some of the comments that would normally come up. If, if you look through the port and you don't have it, there were focus groups that took place and there was community interviews and, and whatnot. And, and, and as I look at this report, there's a lot of good suggestions in here on what you actually said, hey, this is, we're the community and this is what we need, that's in this report. It doesn't mean that there's funds available to fix it, it just means let's recognize that there are things here that need to be looked at.
That's encouraging to us.
Yeah. And I think once you see the report and read through it in that fashion, I think you'll be able to make your own judgment as to whether they did a good enough job and not to, to identify the things that, that are of concern to you. All right, you heard Greg mention, Greg's still on the phone, uh, about stormwater and things like that. Uh, which Brian had indicated had, had been addressed in here, not in totality. It's just recognizing there are stormwater problems here, there are problems with curbing, there's problems with streets, there's problems with abandoned housing, there's problems with safety, there's problems with parks and recreation. This isn't all about problems, there's a lot of opportunities here to improve on things that are already in existence. This isn't a redesign of, of Twin Oaks, it's, it's just trying to say, here's what's going on, here's what the people think. And did we get it all? I don't know if they got it all or not, that'll be left up to you to make a decision once you read through the report. But this is the first time it's been presented to the Planning Commission.
Might I say something, Charles?
Sure.
You have people right in front of you making comments. And if the comments they're making, uh, indicate that they're, don't, they don't know what's in this report, or they're not fully briefed on what's in this report, then may, maybe it behooves us to take more input, uh, from the residents. And maybe we should do, uh, a, a little bit better job of, uh, getting, uh, this information out to the neighborhood or, or this community, uh, in order to generate more, uh, more input. Because I don't believe, uh, that the initial, um, uh, the, um, the walkarounds and, and the speaking to a small, uh, 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 minority of people, um, got enough input on this. If, if it did, then tho- those who were in attendance, uh, probably would have been citing some of the things that are in the report.
So if I can make a comment.
All right, Greg, just hold on a second, okay?
I'm good, I'm good, go ahead.
Think that, um, my recommendation would be to, um, table this and make the copies available on the website. Um, so that people can view it, how many pages is the document? Right. To make it available to the public, um, so they can review it online. Uh, if you want a physical copy, then you need to request that here at the township so they can print it for you. And then, um, give the, the community the opportunity to review it. And then come back before planning, before you send it to the Board of Commissioners. So the Planning Board is just for that, an overview, right? So they're not going to go through every page, read every page, every document. They're not going to do that, it's just an overview of the plan. So if you want to have a more in-depth, um, and take some more time to look at it, then that will be my recommendation is to, is that the board, the Planning Board table it and give the community the opportunity to review it.
The boards that are behind me, um, are a summary of the report, uh, as, as was indicated. The report itself is 50 or 60 pages, a lot of it is zoning, uh, existing zoning regulations. This is a summary of, of the findings and recommendations that are here. I brought these boards specifically for the community, I'm happy to be able to hear any comments. You're welcome to come over, review these, read these, I'm happy to hear any comments that you may have this evening as well.
I have a, um, a statement. Uh, I, I, um, heard about the report online, some people, uh, if you have it online, some people cannot, review it, access it, like some of the older people. And if they can, uh, get it from request a copy, have it made available to, to act, uh, here, township, that would be good.
We can absolutely make copies and I understand that, you know, some hesitation, right? Like, uh, to an extent, we're the big bad government, I get it. Um, so just so everybody knows that the ethos of this project was, we took the heart and soul value statement. So that was a four-year-long process of community outreach in the communities to find out what matters the most to people in the community. So four years worth of community outreach. We took that information, we then produced a survey, we, we handed that survey out to every house and we took that information. That information came back and was shared with all the planners as, hey, this was a survey of the community on these specific questions and, and what they were interested in. We then took that information, did that exercise with the planners, because those are the people who get to see what, you know, they plan in all the different communities out there, they have their different specialties, they can, I might say, hey, I like the way this looks, and they say, oh, well, you know, actually this works out better, here's a picture of it in a different neighborhood. So, so that was bringing the, the professionals in to help vet out some of these ideas. And then these boards over here with the explanation of the plan and the community survey, we're, we're at that, uh, Juneteenth event and we were there for about four hours presenting that to the public. So, so this, and maybe it wasn't explained enough, so these, yeah, this event is actually to, uh, to gain comment from the, the, the Planning Commission. And then it's an open public comment period, so people can make public comments. So you could say, I, I hope the plan addresses this, this, and this, I would hope the plan would address this. This is what I like about my community, I would hope that you would include that. This is what I don't, don't like about my community, uh, I would, I would hope that you'd fix this. And then Brian does have the boards over there, that one to the right. If you read that one to the right, that's basically the gist of what we think we can get done over the next five years. So that would be kind of that. Now, again, like I said, we did not put a lot of heavy lifts in this, in this project, 13 different areas. We're trying to work on all these, how can we incrementally make improvements in the community and keep incrementally making improvements so that, so that we get to that tipping point where it's like, oh my gosh. You know, I woke up, I woke up that day and walked around and said Upper Chichester is a whole different place, right? So, so that's kind of what we're trying to achieve there. But yeah, absolutely, I think it may, is a good idea to get the, the, the report out in a draft version, let people look through it. Let us know, you can even, if you have comments and want to send them to me by email or just drop them off on paper, I can get them over to Brian to take a look and see what he can do throughout the plan and if there's room to move. I do think once you see it, you're, you'd be pleasantly surprised, again, we tried to keep it really simple and basic, what do we think we can get done? And that's what we focused on, right? We want a lot of wins.
All right, I think we're going to open it up to the board here to, to make comments. Joe, you want to say something?
Stipulations on that, um, is one of those stipulations to make sure that, um, that it does go to like a, a homeowner and not like a, with the corporation to keep it from, you know, turning it into, you know, all rental properties. It's like a big thing right now, I mean, but.
They get deed restricted, um, so that they can't be a rental property, they have to be si- single, uh, homeownership first, first home.
Cindy?
Thanks for the overview, Brian. I do have two questions. One is about the gateway, which I think is a great idea, you know, coming into the township to be able to recognize where you are. Um, but within the report, there's a suggestion that perhaps Broadway should be a cul-de-sac at Market Street. If I understood that correctly, then that would mean that Washington Avenue would be the, the gateway entrance or the entrance to the development, the community.
I can't hear you. Cindy, I heard your comment, uh, George, I can't hear you.
Not George.
Uh, there was a comment raised about the, the cul-de-sac and something in the report we're trying to clarify at the moment.
Okay.
So then the entrance to the community would still be the streets that, um, open up onto Market? Would be all of Broadway, Washington? So what I'm wondering is, in trying to envision, will there be like a main entrance to the community versus just, not, not that the streets wouldn't be accessible, but when you enter the community, would it be obvious to you that you're entering Twin Oaks Village?
Yes, that is the game plan, uh, that's the goal of this. One of the components that we need to address is what property is available to create that gateway.
Right.
Uh, we, we, again, we can't just go in and take somebody's property and, and say, we're taking this over for, you know, landscaping and signage. And by the way, you don't have a driveway, uh, or, or something along those lines. So it needs to be something, for, for example, uh, the vacant properties, it was addressed on Market Street. If, uh, new owners came into that property, uh, it would be the opportunity to say, okay, yes, you know, a- as they're going through the Planning Commission or any development program, you know, we'd like to see a buffer here, we'd like to see a sidewalk, we'd like to see signage. So it might be the opportunity to create kind of a gateway. Uh, so yes, there, there's the discussion of, of one of those intersections becoming that main gateway area.
Okay, thanks. My other question has to do with historic preservation. Perhaps I missed it in the report, but I don't think I saw anything that addressed that specifically. And the community has some significant historic resources, including the Washington Avenue School that's been, uh, converted to a private residence, the Thaddeus Stevens School that was the site of, um, protests during the, uh, 60 civil rights protests, um, and Worth City itself, you know, the, the early development for, um, supplying employees to the industrial, uh, the industry in the area, you know, in Worth Steel, which was in North Wilmington specifically. So I'm wondering if any thoughts been given to, uh, recognizing those historic sites or the history of the community.
So that's a good point. What we, what we did address in the report and what, what we discussed was design standards to maintain that, that character. Uh, but we didn't necessarily call out the historic aspects specifically. Uh, so that is something that I can go back and take a look at and see what we've been drawing for the community.
That, that would be great, especially if there are going to be enhancements to the park, there may be area there to do it. Um, or at this, you know, entrance that, um, we may be able to create in the future. That's all I.
I will say in the, uh, the seal that we're showing, uh, this real convention is on the streets on them. We're showing it on all the exhibits, uh, I'm sure you were aware for the community's benefit, this was a, uh, you know, a seal, a logo that was developed as part of the Heart and Soul Community Initiative that does take into account those historic aspects.
Yep, I, I believe it's the, um, Twin Oaks Station with the locomotive, you know, with the steam on the track there that I think I sent that.
Yes.
Image, yep. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck?
Chuck, I can't hear you.
Everybody's point too. People were involved in the pieces of putting us together, this is the first time this is in its entire. I think, you know, definitely everyone's going to have to have an opportunity to actually go through this, to see everything.
Absolutely, and, and, um, as I started my opening statement, you know, this is the, the, our initial presentation. Um, this is an overview of the process, how we got to this point, so totally understand.
Okay, uh, first off, let me, let me commend the people who put this together yourself and the rest of the, the team. It's, it's a very comprehensive, uh, it's not a hard read. It's very well organized and I think the community, once they see it, will, uh, be able to recognize the things that they agree with pretty readily and also be able to point out things that they think might need additional emphasis and whatnot, without too much trouble. Uh, one of the things that I, I would suggest though, from a standpoint of even putting it up on the website, if it eventually gets there, is when you reference your appendices in section eight, I guess it is, in other report, put the zoning at the end. Because you have about 15 pages of zoning that people are just not going to want to read. It's important that it be in here, but I think it would be more important if the maps and exhibits were in front of it rather than, than behind it, because that's where their, their eyes are going to go to what they recognize. And reading a bunch of legal document, legal ordinances and things like that, uh, while it's important that you understand those, I don't think it's the emphasis of what they need to see as they, they go through the report and try, try to digest it. Uh, I think there's a very good, uh, presentation here with respect to what you believe, the committee believed, the group believed that was, uh, important, each one of the particular sections that you broke it down to, who's responsible for it. And there's a lot of defaults to, uh, I'm trying to think of a word, I always lose, when you get old, you start forgetting to use what words to use. Bottom line is, you know, uh, acronyms, that's what I was looking for, D E P, D G, D G W. And what, I was very pleasantly surprised to see that the page right after that provided a definition of what all those little acronyms meant. And so often that's forgotten when we try to share something with the community, because if you work within the government or work with the government, you throw around acronyms like they were just something you had the discussion at the breakfast table with. And to have a definition of what those acronyms are and who they are will help the community focus on where's this money coming from and who are you talking about, what is that partner type thing? Uh, the other thing is on your maps that are, that are attacking, attached here, uh, right above the seal on each one of the maps, you have an explanation of what that map is. I think you need some other way of emphasizing what that map is. It, it's like you read everything else and then you realize that that's what this map is. It's like, I don't think there's enough room to put a title page at the top of each map or something, but some other way of emphasizing, maybe even boxing. I, some way of making it clearer. but some other way of emphasizing, maybe even boxing, some way of making it clearer, what am I, I'm looking at a density map, I'm looking at a zoning map, I'm looking at this. Some way that they know right away what that particular map is, I think is important, would be important for that. With that, I'm looking for, we had Nicole make mention of what we possibly could do here. And therefore, I'm looking for some suggestions from the panel, what you'd like to do. Sure.
I have one more question I forgot to ask. Looking at the signage, it talks about Twin Oaks. And maybe this is a question for the community as well. But this is actually Twin Oaks Village, the village that grew up around the train station there versus Twin Oaks Farms and Twin Oaks Manor. And I don't know if that distinction needs to be made in the signage, that it's Twin Oaks Village specifically and not just Twin Oaks generally. So just something to consider.
Okay.
I mean, when you said signage, that building that used to be Thaddeus Stevens School don't have no sign on it. And if it's a commercial business, it should have a sign on it, what it is, because a lot of trucks come in there and they're lost because they don't know where, no sign on it. And if it's commercial property, ought to have a business sign up on it. And that's just one thing that been bugging me about that building is like, so, you know, like, nobody knows what really goes on in that building. No windows, no signs, fence around it, pool in the back. What's in that water back there? Signage. We need to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, thank you for your presentation.
Are you done with the comments?
I think we're done with comments, Greg. We're going to look for a motion as to where we're going with this.
Wait a minute, I have one more comment as a board member. I first spoke as just a member of the community, but now I'm making comments as a member of the commission. So Cindy, I really appreciate many of the things that you said, particularly about the historical nature of the village and the very mention of it being Twin Oaks Village. I think it's important to establish the identity of this particular community. I think that'd be a great thing to do. I will be, as a commission member, adding some specific comments about the land use and housing, Market Street scape enhancement and the park and recreation vegetative buffers. I think that's something that we can do or suggest to buffer the noise. But might I remind everyone in attendance, this money is not something that is gifted to us from some benevolent God. This is taxpayer money. All the stuff that we get from where these entities that we get it from comes as a result of people paying taxes. So this money belongs to the public, it belongs to taxpayers. So we should keep that in mind. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Greg.
So Greg, I think that's a really good point. So in absence of a plan, the money goes to the areas with the plans. So right now, the township has already completed a 322 corridor revitalization plan. They've completed a Boothwind Town Center plan. And they've concluded a Linwood Heights plan. And then next month, we'll be starting the Boothwind Heights plan. So these plans dictate how we can funnel the tax dollars back into the neighborhoods. So when there's not a plan for the neighborhood, there's no direction, right? Those who fail to plan, fail to do, right? So these plans are what give us the guidelines to go back to the staff and to go back to the board members and say, here are the priorities in the community and what needs to get done. So we are going to get 13 of these plans done. So there's going to be a lot of different, you know, allocations of resources. So, you know, think of, and again, that's why we're going with this five-year stuff we can accomplish, because if we go after that $20 million project and I have five different board members that represent different wards that may have two to three different neighborhoods that they're trying to elevate as well, that can get lost very easily going after a very large project. But going after these smaller wins and incremental improvements and things that we know that we can get done with our resources that we have available allow us to consistently make improvements in all of the communities.
And to any of the residents who are in attendance, I live at 2355 Douglas. So if you feel free to stop by the house and to mention to me any specific things once you get a hold of the report or unable to look more in depth at what's being presented. If you have any suggestions, things that you'd like me to look into, feel free.
But I wanted to know if any thought has been taken in when we travel over the bridge at 452, that there's a left turn there on Broadway? Because it seems like when I'm turning in Broadway, those cars just realize that I'm there. Yeah, to Broadway.
That'll be something that'll probably be, when, if we're going to do a Market Street, Streetscape Plan and Enhancement Plan to submit the PNDOT for funding, they're going to make us do a traffic study. So they'll track volumes of cars and different, you know, get crash data from the police department, near misses, that kind of stuff and help enhance that roadway there.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're done with the comments and done with the board's comments. So looking for a motion as to where do you think we ought to go with this?
This is Greg Trader. I'd like to put forth a motion that we table any decisions on going forward in lieu of further public comments.
Thank you, Greg. That was being discussed just before you made that mention. But is that sufficient for the commission? Or do you have anything else you'd like to say about it? Or?
You're directing that to me?
No, I'm directing it at you as part of the board and I'm also directing it to the other people. And Chuck is commenting at the moment.
Oh, no, I was just putting that out as a motion to be decided if someone wanted to second it or not and a vote on it, that's what I'm seeking.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table the decision as to looking at this Twin Oaks presentation with respect to forwarding it to the Board of Commissioners. If that's sufficient, we can take a vote. If anybody'd like to make any addendums to it, the floor is open for that.
Just to acknowledge that the delay is so that the community has a chance to review the report.
All right, Greg, we have a suggestion that we add to your motion to table that the purpose behind this is to provide the community an opportunity to have an opportunity to review the report.
Oh, yes, perfect, that's fine.
All right.
George, you said there is going to be hard copies of this. Is that something that the residents would come here to pick up? Or how would they get their hands on a hard copy of this?
We can print out hard copies here if anybody wants from the township. Just feel free to stop by or give us a call. If one person wants to collect a bunch of them for the neighbors, we could do that too. Whatever you want to do.
All right, so if I can restate the motion, I hear that we have a motion to table. The recommendation for approval is sending this forward to the Board of Commissioners until such time as the community has an opportunity to review the report. And my concern there is, do we want to look at a timeframe here? Or is this an open-ended timeframe that we're looking at? I saw some, I heard George mentioned some expediency, some expediency here with respect to no plan, no money type situation. And I'm just trying to cut to the chase here, I think.
George, what's your timetable for getting this report forwarded?
Well, I mean, six months ago. I mean, ideally, I'd like to churn these out relatively quick so that we can get them and then we can start picking the projects out of them to put them into our capital improvement plan. The board will be adopting a capital improvement plan. It'll be up for consideration in December. I don't know if that gives us the time period to get these items into the first go on that. But, you know, again, they're like five-year plans. So as things come up that are things that we can do outside of the capital improvement plan, we do them, right? So if there's improvements that could be made through the annual road program, we would recommend to Commissioner Whitaker, there's three items that can be done in this. So ideally, the next Planning Commission is November 17. I anticipate it to be a very jam-packed, long meeting with a very large attendance. So I don't necessarily know if this is the, that's the best venue to come back to this. So maybe, well, December, so it'd be December 18, I believe it is. So it's getting very close to the holidays.
Then what about January?
Maybe January, do it at the January meeting.
Okay.
Probably due to that night, because I imagine we'll be presenting the Boothwind Heights that night as well.
So if we added to our motion that we would reconsider this after the New Year? Would that be sufficient? Dan, would that work? Okay. So I need to restate it, or does everybody have a common understanding of what I said? We have a motion on the floor to table, but so that the community will have an opportunity to review and that we would most likely review this again in the New Year, beginning of the New Year.
I'm fine with that.
All right, we have a yes for everything or any objection? All right, so moved.
George, let me know either by email or text or whatever. When you get the sufficient amount of hard copies, I'll pick them up and I'll distribute them in the neighborhood.
All right, anybody on the commission have any other items that they'd like to bring to the attention of the board? Okay, with that, have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you very much for your comments.